When they suffer, we all suffer because those barriers to learning affect the success of our overall economy and society.
L.A. County Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas says the recently passed Measures H and HHH will provide relief in more housing and services, but that will take time. In the shorter term, L.A. community colleges have launched a first-ever voucher meal plan, providing free food for enrolled students in emergency situations only.
They can go to the counselor, they can go to an administrator, and they can say, "Hey, I haven't eaten today, I haven't eaten this week, I need help," and they will provide them with a voucher for free food that day.
Scott Svonkin, L.A. CCD Board President, says emergency students will be able to take advantage of two free days of food at most, enough time to hook them up with services.
Our job is not to provide food at our cafeterias free, our job is to connect people that need services to them permanently.
There's also a plan in the works to build affordable student housing on community college campuses.
You know, I hope that they really do what they say they do, like they really put like action to what they're talking about.
At L.A. Trade Tech College, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Students in need can get help now by calling the L.A. Homeless Services Authority at 213-683-3333. And over in the Valley, community members are doing what they can to help those struggling with homelessness by offering much-needed services. Anna Marcos takes us to the latest Homeless Connect Day in Van Nuys. Anna.
Cookie, anyone? Yana, as you can see, there are about 150 to 200 people here today come to get services at Homeless Connect Day, including cookies.
They line up early as Homeless Connect Day kicks off at the Hope of the Valley nonprofit in Van Nuys. The event, which brings city and county services together, has been so popular, it's now a monthly happening here.
They feed you, they clothe you, take showers. You can come here and get a peace of mind and get away from whatever's going on out there in the streets.
Just a large hub of resources for people to get the help they need.
I've been homeless for seven months. My ex-husband hit me, tried to kill me.
You look great.
I feel fantastic. I'm just very artsy. I've been artsy all my life. I think just because I'm homeless, it's important to keep myself nice.
I need to get off the streets. I've been out here four years now.
For the first time, L.A. family housing is heading this effort, which means more housing opportunities here. Even if you don't get housing right away, volunteers take your information so you're on a housing wait list. Meanwhile, you can stop by and get medical services or stock up on clothes and shoes, plenty to pick from. There's leashes, bowls, and all kinds of goodies for your pet. Or how about a nice haircut and style, courtesy of the Western Barber's Institute.
I want to help out the community, get back to everybody I can.
Some homeless residents are so gung ho about this place, they also volunteer and help out, people like Keith Russell and his wife, Melissa McQueen.
Why I'm volunteering is from my heart. This is what I do. I've been doing it over a year. It kept me with hope, you know what I'm saying? That's real. Like, coming here, Hope of the Valley is it.
Oh, it's real for this dog, all right. Looks like he found the pet goodies. All in all, a little something to make everyone feel a little more at home, even when they don't have one. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Hope of the Valley is a nonprofit that helps people who are homeless. Besides all the city, county, and state agencies on hand, the event also got help from local neighborhood councils, which donated food and clothing. While tech titans of Silicon Beach are working on another issue in our community, the county's outdated foster care system. Gil Reyes has some new ideas from a recent hackathon.
Most foster kids have a tough enough time as it is growing up. Now add how difficult it can be reuniting with loved ones with all this crazy gridlock.
And in L.A. traffic, that can be a nightmare. And so I look at things like Uber and Lyft and some of the airline scheduling technology and think, how can we use some of that to help move our kids around so they spend less time in cars?
The Department of Children and Family Services gets creative at this Hack Foster Care Hackathon in Playa Vista. Officials from the foster care system collaborate with tech titans like Snapchat, Full Screen, and Disney Interactive on ways to improve.
I think a lot of people in tech, especially there are so many new people who are working here in Silicon Beach, who didn't know in their own backyard that Los Angeles has the biggest foster care population. It's one of the largest child welfare systems in the nation. And so here today, we've invited hackers to learn about the issues of child welfare in Los Angeles and then also help us come up with solutions using the tools that they know.
Another idea is a phone texting community, offering advice to foster youth making the tough transition into adulthood. And there are more concepts.
Whether that means we're thinking of an app that connects that homeless young person to a bed that night, or an application that helps a young person or family get licensed faster, it's about really figuring out, how can we serve the young people and families in our care better?
In full support is L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, who, with his wife Amy Wakeland, has fostered seven children. Maggie Lynn, a former foster child turned advocate, says much of the system could use an upgrade.
In this day and age, when you can find a place to live anywhere around the world in less than 24 hours on Airbnb, when you can find someone to marry on eHarmony or someone to go on a date with in 10 minutes on Tinder, it's crazy that we can't, we don't have some of the solutions.
But techies are making waves in Silicon Beach. In Playa Vista, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Other foster care hackathons have taken place in Washington, D.C. and in the Bay Area Silicon Valley. Well, just like Lady Liberty's torch symbolizes the light of hope in New York, Los Angeles now unveils a new symbol of its own, a stainless steel monument that will glisten during the day and light up at night. Rasha Goel has more.
Hundreds gathered at the inaugural L.A. Freedom Festival to witness the unveiling of this stainless steel monument known as the Freedom Sculpture. It's a gift to the city by the Iranian-American community. The sculpture is a replica of the Cyrus Cylinder from the Persian Empire of King Cyrus the Great.
He was the first ruler 2,500 years ago to recognize human rights, to conquer people but to allow them to keep their own religion and to keep their own traditions.
And that's the inspirational message being promoted here. The Farang Foundation, who was pivotal in this effort, says the idea was to create a parallel between Iranian and American values while showcasing the need for diversity, respect, and religious freedom.
Freedom to me is allow people to be who they are without harming another person next to them.
The monument is located at one of the busiest intersections in West Los Angeles. With up to 100,000 cars passing per day, the Freedom Sculpture is modeled to give the illusion of movement from all directions. It symbolizes the transhistorical messages found on the Cyrus Cylinder and their applicability to the modern period.
It's the result of the donations and contributions of over 1 million people who raised over $2 million to make this dream happen in Los Angeles.
Officials say this Freedom Sculpture, called the Statue of Liberty of the West Coast, is the most widely crowdfunded monument ever gifted in United States history. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The Freedom Sculpture will be a permanent fixture at the intersection of Santa Monica Boulevard and Century Park East. It's a way of putting nature back into young children's learning. The L.A. Unified School District is adding so-called Nature Explore classrooms to some of its early education centers. Anna Marcos joins us from Van Nuys with more. Anna.
Yana, who says you can't learn the ABCs under a tree? As you can see, nature comes into the classroom at the Armenta Street Early Education Center.
Using building blocks made of natural wood, watching plants grow, and learning to walk this nature obstacle course is all part of the learning curriculum. The kids are loving their new Nature Explore classroom.
What's the favorite thing you like to do here?
We play at the park and we play with the water and paint.
I like to go water, but I can't put water on the plants.
This young nature lover is very concerned that I follow the rules.
Why can't I be doing this with my hand here?
Because you get paint on your hand.
I do?
You have to wash it over there.
Oh, okay, so I gotta follow the rules, right? All right.
Parents love the Nature Explore classroom, too.
I want him to grow up to be a good citizen and take care of this earth and, you know, this planet.
The Nature Explore classroom is the fifth out of 11 to be built at early education centers in the school district with state bond education funds. But educators want to see these at all of L.A. USD's early education centers.
Every morning, the children gather in the gathering area, and the teacher asks the children to close their eyes, pay attention to the surrounding, relax, listen, and the children start noticing the simplest sound as the birds chirping.
Lessons are often made out of what the children notice, whether it be the birds or the bees or something else. Parents notice the difference.
I see how well he is speaking. He asks things, he knows how to speak now more fluently.
All this natural bounty is something to clap and sing about, but of course...
I told you you should wash it over here. I told you.
Yeah, even in nature, you've got to follow the rules. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Nature Explore classrooms cost about $1 million each. Well, remember summer camp? Well, if so, you're lucky, as many families can't afford the luxury. But this camp is free, swimming, kayaking, and horseback riding included. Gil Reyes has more from Mid-City. Gil.
Yana, let the fun begin. Actually, the fun has already started with these kids already boarding buses, their parents waiting anxiously for their departure, as the kids will be spending three days and two nights in summer camp. Welcome to another spectacular year for Camp Wesson.
Almost all of the kids have boarded. They're excited for this mini-vacation, and so are their parents.
I'm enjoying sleeping in tomorrow morning and having breakfast, just me and my husband at home together, without a lot of energy in the room.
And the Roth, from Council District Headquarters in Mid-City to Hanson Dam Recreation Center. Camp Wesson Summer Camp was founded by City Council President Herb Wesson. It's mainly for kids whose families can't afford traditional camp.
The majority of these kids come from the district that I'm fortunate to represent, but I turn away no kids. You know, we have a limit of about 120 kids. We stay at that, and I don't care where you live. It's a free camp. You know, so parents have had their children with them every day of the life of that child. This gives them three days to just kind of breathe and relax.
The kids also get that same respite from their parents. We don't, we don't think, seem to think that the kids need a break also, but they need a break from rules and regulations. They're here, but it's in a different format.
How do you feel right now? Are you excited? Are you scared or what?
I'm excited and scared at the same moment.
Kids also learn to conquer their fears, as this marks the first time many of them are away from their parents.
Beautiful. All right. Keep going. Here we go.
Over at the rock-climbing wall, Romy Higgins struggles midway, but with encouragement, reaches the top.
I was really scared, but I pulled through. I thought about my mom a little bit, so that pulled me through, too. So, yeah.
What do you mean, you thought of your mom? You thought, like, tell me about that.
Like, keep pushing, never give up.
Get that cowbell, get it! You're there. Get it!
And it's such, it's like life. You might have an obstacle in life that you're going to see that it's really impossible, but with a little help, someone coaching you or someone telling you, or like with the young man who said that his mom said, "Never give up," you can do it.
Camp counselors hope the lessons will last a lifetime. The camp now in its 11th year.
And it has evolved into this, so we're darn proud of it.
Happy trails, and we'll see you all again next summer. Reporting from Camp Wesson, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The group Community Build helped select the kids. Community Build also pitched in to supply three days of free food, clothes, and activities. And another city department is also supporting Community Kids this summer by helping develop the building blocks for success. Rasha Goel has more on the L.A. City Department of Rec and Parks' Summer Leadership Program.
13-year-old Janet Kawano has been coming to the Echo Park Recreation Center since she was five years old. She used to come as a student for their summer camp, but now she is there to give back to other students as a camp leader.
I get to work with all types of people and understand what it's like to have a job, even though I'm 13. I wanted to become a camp leader because it would help me in school and I'd learn leadership.
Janet is among nine other teens who are part of the camp leadership program offered through Echo Park's Department of Recreation and Parks that helps prepare teens for the real world.
The CLP program brings the teens into our community, teaching them service and leadership together.
They learn leadership, team building, and management. They also put on special events such as this one, where they plan everything from start to finish. But it's helping take care of the campers that gives them a strong sense of responsibility.
I learned leadership, how to like play with the kids and teach them about sports and other activities.
The camp leadership program runs for nine weeks in the summer, winter, and spring. Participants attend five days a week for pretty much a full day, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The kids first go through a training program prior to camp and then participate as leaders.
I was nervous because I didn't think I was going to do that great, but as time passed by, it got pretty easy.
And by the time they are done, they are ready to conquer the world. In Echo Park, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
For more information on other Department of Rec and Parks programs, visit laparks.org. While students who walk or bike to school in Hollywood will soon be a lot safer on the street, officials take steps to fight street racing in Chatsworth, and a new housing complex in Mid-City offers affordable units to seniors. All these stories in City B. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and community members broke ground on several new pedestrian safety improvements at Hollywood High and Selma Avenue Elementary Schools in Hollywood. City officials announced the plan as part of the Safe Routes to School program, which helps improve traffic safety for students who walk and bike to and from school. Improvements will include new traffic signals, speed humps, curb extensions, new streetlights, and sidewalks. One of the main goals is to reduce speeds on Selma Avenue and increase the visibility of people walking.
It's going to be not only safer, but much more beautiful, and we're going to encourage people to walk and give them a level of safety here that they've never had before.
Councilmember Mitchell Englander and representatives from LAPD and LADOT unveiled the installation of rumble strips on Plummer Street in Chatsworth as part of a new pilot project to combat illegal street racing. Plummer Street between Canoga Avenue and Topanga Boulevard, a frequent site for street racing, has been referred to as the Canoga Speedway and was the site where two spectators were killed in 2015. L.A. City Councilmember Paul Coretts helped celebrate the reopening of Beverly Park Senior Apartments, formerly known as Beth Am Manor. The three-story complex located at 1071 La Cienega in Mid-City features 49 low-income one-bedroom units for seniors and people with disabilities. Coretts talked about the importance of affordable housing for seniors in his district.
We have a huge shortage of housing and affordable housing, and seniors don't necessarily have another place to go, so this is a great opportunity.
If you're looking for a fun evening this summer, then head on over to North Hollywood for No Ho Summer Nights, a free concert and movie series that's perfect for the whole family. Gil Reyes takes us there.
Beatlemania has arrived in North Hollywood, so have Maria Aguilar and her family.
We like being out, and we like enjoying people, and we love music, and this is a great time to come out and just enjoy.
Beatles cover band Ticket to Ride among the acts performing at this year's No Ho Summer Night series. The events at North Hollywood Park are hosted by Councilmember Paul Krikorian.
Tonight, we're here for the second of a series of five concerts. Every Saturday night, we're having free concerts, free to the public. Anybody can come on down, spread their blanket out, enjoy a picnic, and listen to some terrific live music. And then following the concert series, we're going to be having a series of five free movie screenings here as well. I want you, I want you, I want you. I think you know by now.
Ticket to Ride is billed as America's number-one Beatles tribute band. The Department of Cultural Affairs and the Valley Cultural Center help bring them and other acts here.
I pay attention to all the venues here in the park. I love the way that they have outdoor entertainment.
It's going to be a great summer of activity every Saturday evening in this park.
We'll see you there. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
For a complete schedule of concerts and movies, visit valleycultural.org. While experiencing the culture and food of Ecuador during the food festival and parade, enjoy a glimpse into the past of downtown's historic theaters, and get on board with a free movie night in North Hollywood. All this and this week's Things to Do. Come out and celebrate the 19th Annual Taste of Ecuador Food Festival and Parade. More than 10,000 Ecuadorians and 5,000 other folks from different nationalities will enjoy a full menu of Ecuadorian cuisine and some other well-known food dishes. Folks will also enjoy Ecuadorian crafts, Ecuadorian musical groups, folklore, customs, commercial products, free gifts, carnival games, and more. The parade will also feature car clubs, dance groups, drill teams, convertibles, and motorcycles. So don't miss it on August 6th from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. at El Pueblo. Take a walking tour of downtown L.A.'s historic theater district and learn all about Broadway's evolution and ongoing revitalization. Broadway thrived for decades as the entertainment epicenter of Los Angeles. Still a vibrant shopping street, the area is now a hub of adoptive reuse projects that have turned office buildings and department stores into housing, dining, retail, and nightlife destinations. The tour takes place Saturday, August 5th from 10 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. For more, visit laparkconservancy.org. Relive one of the most memorable love stories of all time, as 11-time Oscar winner Titanic hits the big screen during No Ho Summer Nights. Follow Rose and Jack's journey as they fall in love on the ill-fated ship. Gather the family, some blankets, chairs, and snacks, and head on over to Movie Night on Saturday, August 5th at the North Hollywood Park, located at 11430 Chandler Boulevard. For more, visit valleycultural.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti. I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies. 911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard. If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
House and its Police Department, what are you reporting?
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take their seats. Shh. Everyone would please take their seats. Today is Tuesday, August 1st. I want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Sidio, Englander, Harastos, and Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Bloomingfield seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for...
Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Rue seconds. Next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, let's be led today by Mr. O'Farrell. If all would please rise for our salute of the flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everyone would please place their right hand on their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue 1A to August 29th, 2017, sir.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing. Mr. President, there are cards on all 3 items.
Okay, continue.
Items 4 and 5 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials, members. Let's prepare then to vote on those items. Let's open up... Mr. Rue.
Number 2, could I make a verbal motion to strike condition 8 in the Bureau of Engineering report dated May 10, 2017?
I'll tell you what, just stay there. Let's vote on items 4 and 5, and then I'll go back to yours. We have a technical issue with our... Okay, well, can we not do... Can we do a verbal? Okay, so let's... I mean, as we are fixing the computer glitch on items 4 and 5, can't we just do this manually?
Yes, sir, we can.
So are there any objections on items 4 and 5? Okay, so now we're back up. So on items 4 and 5, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 5, forthwith. Let's go back to Mr. Rue. Mr. Rue, you had an amendment?
Yes, wanted to call item number 2 a special and make a verbal motion to strike condition 8 in the Bureau of Engineering report dated May 10, 2017.
Okay, I'll second that if there's a need. So continue.
Items 6 through 11 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Mr. President, there are cards on all items, sir.
Okay, mister's... Okay, so that brings us where?
That brings council to presentations items called special or general public comments, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to recognize Mr. Corretts. Mr. Corretts, are you ready with your presentation? Then the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm proud to stand here today in honor and recognition of our very own L.A.-based International Criminal Court Alliance. This organization advocates for U.S. participation in the International Criminal Court by means of research, education, and public organization, and has done this for the past 15 years. We hardly think of international justice on a city level, but attaining that level of peace truly comes down to the individual, the advocate, and that's what makes our government institutions efficient and energetic. Truly representative democracy relies on institutions like the International Criminal Court Alliance to educate not only our government, but the citizens we serve and represent. We're lucky to have such a generous, active, and determined group of men and women advocating for such a noble initiative. This including our own Mayor Garcetti, who's an advisory member. Los Angeles proudly supports the ICCA in its efforts to promote a just and equitable international legal system that will address both crimes of war and crimes against humanity. The city of Los Angeles is home to a plethora of people who have escaped genocides, countries ravaged by crime, and now live in a country with a rule of law, accountability, and justice. And now we have the ability to increase positive cooperation with the ICC in order to help bring that same standard of accountability to the international stage. U.S. cooperation with the ICC might have prevented thousands of forced migrations and involuntary displacements. So if not to our country, to our constituents, we have an obligation to help remedy those heinous crimes. It's time we help end our long past of limited American participation and contribute to the makings of peace rather than simply observe it on the sidelines. It's high time we quit being a bystander and build sustainable peace in our often tumultuous international community. And the first step in doing so is by recognizing and invigorating this organization at the city level. Therefore, we resolve today to formally express our wholehearted support for the International Criminal Court and proclaim July 17, 2017 to be World Day for International Justice. We thank you for making our city a center for international advocacy, and thank you for all that you do to improve not just this city, but the world. And now if I could ask Sean Butler to...
Give him a round of applause. Just give him a round.
You could tell us a little bit more about the organization.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you all. If you could do something to stop mass murder, you would do it. It's the right thing to do. If you could do something to stop use of child soldiers, you would do it. It's the right thing to do. If you could do something to stop rape as a weapon of war used on a massive scale, you would do what you could, and it's the right thing to do. Those are all the things that the International Criminal Court hopes to achieve by holding individuals accountable for atrocity crimes. The ICC is a treaty-based organization, and in the United States, we have a number of people who have fled from the atrocity crimes who are probably in each one of your districts. And what's happened in their country is the rule of law does not apply. There is no law enforcement mechanism. We're blessed. We live in the United States of America, and we do have the rule of law, and we do have law enforcement. The ICC hopes to impose the rule of law on those that commit atrocity crimes wherever they are located, but the ICC does not have its own police force. The ICC relies on the cooperation of nations, and our goal is universal ratification of the treaty so that all nations are members of the court and so that no one can escape accountability. If someone is accused of these crimes, there's no safe haven that they can travel to, and they will be held accountable. Your support shows that the U.S. and Los Angeles support those principles and support those goals. We thank you for your support over the many years that you've given it to us. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, if there's no council speakers, it's my honor to recognize World Day for International Justice and make this presentation to the ICCA.
Mr. Price, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Price for intros?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I've got two introductions I'd like to make this morning. First, we've got some friends visiting with us from Xinjiang, China, delegation of leaders. Why don't you stand up?
Please stand up. Welcome.
They are here, part of the USC Price School of Public Policy. They are having a chance to learn about our city, a chance to meeting with council members and officials, and we just appreciate sharing our experiences and look forward to continued collaboration between our two cities. Congratulations. Thank you. Also, Mr. President, members, I want to introduce and welcome to the council chambers this morning future business leaders of my district. Through the Business Resource Center, for the last three years, the Youth Innovative and Entrepreneurial Leadership Development Program, YIELD, has allowed high school youth in my district to be exposed to innovative technology, solutions, business leaders, and a myriad of industrial sectors. The program allows high school students to learn firsthand what it takes to go into business, to be in business, to be a real entrepreneur. It's in my period that the youth in the district are exposed to many facets that encompass entrepreneurship and the world of business. In representing this cohort for this year, we have representatives from Jefferson High... Why don't you stand up, gang? Jefferson High School, Nava College Preparatory Academy, San Tito High School, Maya Angelou High School, and Mervyn Dimmerly High School. Students, we hope this will be an exciting experience for you and look forward to your continued success. Thank you. Thank you, members.
Again, welcome. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Mr. President, I also want to make a welcome and an introduction of some of my summer interns who are here. Come on, stand up, guys. I've got Leo Cho, Tessamo Mao, Jake Field, Nick Casozzi, Rion Raines.
Give them a round of applause. Hey, Mr. Bloomingfield, you get five, boy.
They're here to see democracy working in action, and we're going to show them what we do.
Wonderful. Anyway, thank you, guys, and welcome. Okay, let's go to public comments. Why don't we pull up on my screen, Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, I have you at 6A, B, 6A through 6F, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 9. Go ahead.
Well, you knew that on item number 11, Mr. Bloomingfield, the Jew boy is relative offer of a reward for information leading to the identification and apprehension of a conviction person. But little does he not understand that, under my expression and my free speech, I'm responsible for the series of, not the bank robberies, Mr. Bloomingfield, but to make the public aware of how the white Jew boy is only offering rewards based on robberies...
Stay on the subject.
And not on the overall issue on crime. That's why we didn't get the Olympics. And then I go to item number 10 regarding Mr. Weezer, Sycamore Park. I don't give a fuck about Weezer. And then I go to item number 9. Again, Mr. Weezer, relative for funding services associated with 98, Council District 1. I still don't give a fuck about Jose Weezer. And then I go to item number 8, Mr. And then I go to item number eight, Mr. Peppa Pig, relative to funding, personal service contract for a Speedway. Not that we don't have enough drunks driving around here killing people, but yeah, policy associates to provide services for the Fifth Council District. Then I go into, of course, item number five, CD4 Chancellor-
No, you don't have item five, so you have seven and six.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's my-
No, just get on the subject, okay? You're on item seven or six?
Okay, I'll go to item number seven, sir. I'll go to item number seven. No, six, 666. Relative to removing various properties rent escrow, when you do a good job, you white niggas, I say I agree with all your terms and policies based on accompanying the F-U-C-K resolutions for removing the following F-U-C-K properties from the F-U-C-K rent escrow com program, inasmuch F-U-C-K all of you white niggas and owners who have corrected and cited under re-rape violations that provide proof for compliance with the Los Angeles fucking housing, fucking community investment, fucking department for code fucking enforcement like you do with the lanes, rookie, rookie. And then I go on to hubba-dippa-tapability. There's no hubba-dippa-dility in rent escrow. That's why we got that white gentrification going on downtown. Citations of pushing white niggas like me out of my rent control home. That's why we're homeless. And I waive my last eight seconds. I want to go to general fucking public comment now.
Let's give him his one minute of general public comment.
Now, while we were at the Metro Board Meeting, Ms. Charlotte A. Richardson of the Legal Department, for the record, you cannot say to me, Mr. Eric Garcetti, what's offensive. I'll say what the fuck I want under 42 USC 1983 and Clarence Brandonberg versus Ohio, U.S. 444395. Sit your white nigga ass down while I'm under general public comment. Thank you, sir, because the issue involves my rights of free speech and free assembly. No one up there is making a threat other than we're exercising what's offensive to get your goddamn attention. That's why you got the Olympics later on, fool. You got it, rookie? Did you get it? Fake news. Fuck you, Trump.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Harris Dawson?
Wanted to let all of our guests know, we have guests from around the world and from in the community. If you haven't been here before, this is part of the exercise of freedom of speech here in the United States that we practice with vigor here in the city of Los Angeles. And so we do not have the ability to control hate speech and even the most offensive things that you might hear from that podium there, but we protect and defend the right of people to speak.
Okay, Mr. Walsh. Give me Mr. Walsh's items. I think I have them. Items 2, 3, 6, 6A through 6C, 7, 8, 9, 10.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. A slight correction, you oppose freedom of speech, and we won in federal court. Judge Ferguson-
The speaker's off topic.
-called it up. He's lying when he says they gave it to us. They didn't give us anything. Okay, let's talk about 1, 2, and 3. These are building and safety, a nuisance. Public convenience or necessity, sale of alcoholic beverages. You haven't turned down an alcoholic beverage consumption license in 10 years. We lead America in hit-and-run, and the blood of every single hit-and-run victim, majority, minority, is on the hands of these people. Go check it out. We have the most liquor licenses per square mile in the United States, and people are drunk. And one of these days, they're going to run over one of your relatives, and maybe that'll change things, but I don't think it will. Check everything out. What I'm saying is true. This is North Van Nuys Boulevard, the license. Number 8, this is Speedway policy. What does Speedway associates provide services for the Fifth Council? How much money is it? No one's going to ask how much, and I can tell you how much it is. $450,000 goes to a friend of Mr. Coretts. If I'm wrong, he's on his knees in front of this guy. I think that's the guy from Speedway. I'm telling you right now, millions of dollars are being wasted for friends of Mr. Coretts. Look at number 8. Is anything I say wrong? Is anything I- No. Funding personal services. That means on his knees. Coretts is on his knees.
Stay on the subject.
Number 9, funding for services associated with Night of Epiphany event in Council District One. Night of the Epiphany sounds religious to me. And number 11, this is an offer for reward. Did you know that there's a series of bank robberies going on here since June 15th? You didn't see it in the L.A. Times. I'm told about 14 bank robberies. The same people are doing it, and the L.A. Times didn't cover it because they felt it might hurt the Olympics, their chances for the Olympics. The city of Los Angeles is now putting up $15,000 reward, and it's not even important-
Give him his minute.
...to speak about. And let me tell you, now to speak in your defense, there was a vicious, vile scum article about you, Mr. Wesson, in the L.A. Times. It was not one mention of the mayor. They blamed everything on the black man, the black man, and the black man has to get down on his knees and do what he needs to do. This is what has happened, and the article, who do you think put that article in here? The mayor. The mayor isn't even mentioned. All the mayor has to do, Zanheiser is gay, the mayor wags his cute little ass in Zanheiser's face, and he writes an article. All it does is attack you, and you, as a black man, aren't man enough to stand up to him. Why don't you get down on your knees in front of Zanheiser? Why don't you get down on your knees? I'm the only one who speaks up for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay. That, Ms. Madam Clerk or Mr. City Attorney, I believe concludes the multiple comment portion. Now let's vote on items 3, 6, 7, and 8. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now let's vote on items 9, 10, and 11. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Do we have any general public comment? Okay, let me get Rich Ruff, Amber Knight, Leah Memzik, please come forward. When I call your name, please come forward. Brian, if you're here, get ready. Just identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Rich Ruff. I'm not actually discussing this item. I thought I would catch the tail end of that, so I wanted to make a general point about the Olympics, but if this is not that item, I can move to the next one.
Well, this is general public comment, so you can speak on what you want.
I would like to address the city councilman in possibly postponing, if not voting no outright, for approving the 2028 Olympic bid for the city of Los Angeles for a whole litany of reasons, starting with the concerns regarding police brutality and the current affairs with, I don't know how to be too diplomatic about this, the current administration of the United States of America and who they would be putting in charge of homeland security for the surveying and the planning up to the games. I am a member of Assemblyman Kirkorian's district. Hi, Paul. And I have general concerns further for-
Thank you. Thank you.
My apologies.
That's your time. Brian, you want to come up? Leah, Amber Knight, any more folk on just general public comment? Go ahead.
So on LaRouche PAC, Lyndon LaRouche crushed the British coup against the president. I attended the Politicon event by which I met Le Bonch, sends his love to L.A. He wanted to, that is, LaRouche, wanted to make this clear to the American Republic that we're dealing with a coup, and the coup that's being headed up by what LaRouche defines as the British Empire. Now, this is in a context form of the financial empire, obviously, where Wall Street is the enemy, not Russia. You can see the fascism spewing out of the people who want Trump out of office. With the event with Donald Rorbacker, he explicitly said that people from passage telegendsia Ray McGovern defines as a lie.
Okay, thank you. So last call for Amber Knight and Leah. Please come forward. You're going to lose your time. Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Amber Knight. This weekend, I drove my boyfriend's car on a very narrow road in Silver Lake, and I scraped up the side of it, and I feel really terrible. And he's not mad at me, but he thinks his dad might be, and his dad bought the car. And I haven't met his dad yet. So I wanted to take this opportunity to say on public access television that I am very sorry, Robert, for scraping up Bobby's car, and I look forward to meeting you, and it was not Bobby's fault. Thank you, and God bless the city of Los Angeles.
Leah?
My name is Leah Renee Memzik. I'm forced to give up my privacy today in order to protect my property and myself. I own property located at 334 Adairna Way, city of Los Angeles, which is located on Pacific Palisades Coastal Bluffs above Pacific Coast Highway. I am a victim of federal, state crime, and I have been denied my ability to file a complaint, and I've been denied my ability to have protection per the Constitution by Councilmember Bonin and Mayor Garcetti. So for you to have the outrage to say that you uphold the rule of law when you have denied me the rule of law for four years, I have suffered here for four years with your white color crime that you refuse to acknowledge is true, is an outrage and a disgrace to the people of the city of Los Angeles. And I will put the rest online.
Thank you. No applause, Mr. Herman. Thank you very much. Your time's expired. Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment. Now let's take up item 2. I think I have speakers on item 2. If I could see the names on item 2. Is it a Madison, a Neil Brower, Debbie Cozen? And the last name is Ben Perles? I have Eden, and I can't make out the first name. So anyway, are those people here? Come forward.
Good morning, councilmembers. Neil Brower, representing the applicant help group. We're excited to be here before you today with an organization that has dedicated its life essentially to serving the underserved, students, and young adults with a range of behavioral and education conditions. We have been granted the CUP by the city of Los Angeles to operate the school in the location that sits before you, and we asked for the alley dedication to allow development of the property to proceed. You may hear later various objections based on operations of the project, but we'd like to say that most of these objections actually conflict with the conditions of the CUP, which are extensive and which tightly govern the operations on the project site. And with that, we ask for your approval on this alley vacation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. Identify yourself. Next speaker, please identify yourself. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Debbie Cozen. I live at 13031 Killian Street, which adjoins the alley in question. I submitted to the city clerk and the Bureau of Engineering 50 signatures of neighbors who are against vacating the alley, seven of which tenants are directly abutting the alley. The Office of City of Engineering has stated conditions for vacation of this alley, one of which is consent of owners adjoining lots. As an owner directly adjoining the alley, I do not give my consent. Letters are in file of a third owner of adjoining lots that are not giving their consent. And a second, the petitioner states vacation of the alleys for playgrounds, pickup, drop off of 135 students, teachers, support personnel, six days a week. The petitioner is also asking to build a 12-foot metal wall at the property line and 15 feet in a 20-foot building, which will be clearly visible from my property as it is-
Thank you. If I could get the next speaker, if I could get the next speaker, please. Thank you.
I'm Nina Ben Perles, and I volunteered at the school, and the students are making a lot of noise. And the other thing I want to say, I'm a survivor of a terrorist attack in 1974, and I've seen parents throwing children out of the windows, and they were saved because there was an alley. And I bought this house because I want my alley. It's my safety. It's my safety, access to Main Street in the back of my house. The property has issue of flooding, but the public will benefit of vacating a small portion of the alley to save money in negligible and not just if the rest of a long alley is paid for by the city and open. Further vacating the alley is not in compliance with the general plan. The general plan calls for more of these housing in Los Angeles near public transportation. The property is questioned in zone R for-
Thank you.
-for an apartment building, not for a school.
Thank you. Your time's expired.
Thank you.
So do we have any more speakers on this subject? All right, did you want to say something, Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Help Group was founded in 1975 and is the largest, most innovative, and comprehensive nonprofit of its kind in the United States, serving children, adolescents, and young adults with special needs related to autism, autism spectrum disorders, learning disabilities, ADHD, developmental delays, abuse, and emotional challenges. Over the past two years, my office has worked closely with the applicant's representatives to alleviate neighbor concerns related to noise, security, and construction. During the process, several modified conditions of approval have been developed, as well as several project revisions, including movement of entire structures made at the behest of the abutting neighbors. Additionally, the project in question abuts a multifamily dwelling which uses the existing alley as a gated driveway and could negatively impact a resident's privacy and security. The Help Group's current plans, which are the results of extensive deliberation and compromise with the neighbors, require the vacation of this alley in order to be carried out. So colleagues, I strongly urge you to support the vacation of the paper alley and ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Madam Clerk, on this item, if you'd please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we could recess the regular meeting, go into the special. Please call a roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonin Buscayino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Kirkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 13 members present and accor Mr. President.
Okay. We have no, the public comment has been satisfied on this item. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved, so let's forthwith, let's send this forthwith. So let's adjourn and return to the regular. What's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral, sir.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Englander.
Yes, colleagues, tonight is National Night Out, as we all know, and I want to invite everybody to our National Night Out over at Northridge Park at 6:00 PM. And I also want to say something about that. You know, National Night Out is a great tradition here, not only in the city of Los Angeles, but throughout the United States. But it's also become a shame that we have to have one night that we celebrate to go out in our communities and go out in parks. It should be every night. And people here, particularly in Los Angeles, don't feel safe anymore to go in our parks because a lot of the issues that we're having in our parks and in our streets and how to get there and to there and from home. And so it's something we've got to focus on each and every day and have National Night Out every day. But anyway, I want to welcome you and thank you all for coming out and participating to each one of our National Night Outs and working with our police officers and firefighters, and most importantly, our community groups and volunteers that are helping to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Mr. Sadio.
Well, I just want to add on to my colleague, but with a focus to the firefighters, we're partnering with them tonight. They're going to be making barbecue, and they're one of the most popular elements of National Night Out, and so I wanted to thank the union and the rank and file for stepping up. Thank you.
Any other announcements? If everyone would please rise, arise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my right side, Ms. Martinez, Mr. Kirkorian's side. I do not see any. I'm now looking to my left side, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. Today, I rise and request that we adjourn in the memory of Ms. Wanda Mae Jackson, a longtime resident of the 9th District but an activist in South Los Angeles for so many years. Many of the key congregations in my district were begun by her. She dedicated her life to be what is called a Bible worker. That is a person who is not a man, but who wants to work on behalf of the church. She dedicated her life to that and actually helped organize four congregations in my district and throughout South Los Angeles. She was the mother of 18 children and an additional 10 adopted children. When she passed away, she had over 100 grandchildren and dozens of great-grandchildren, and we had a beautiful service on this past Friday that I was able to attend in her honor, a person who really, day by day, brick by brick, block by block, helped build a village that not only raised me but dozens and thousands of young people in South Los Angeles over the past seven or eight decades. So we ask the council to join us in adjourning in her memory.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you. Colleagues, today I'd like you to join me in adjourning in the memory of a police officer, Police Officer 3 Chad Frederick Hall, serial number 32457. Chad was born and raised in San Diego, California, but his passion was here in Los Angeles. He was appointed to the Los Angeles Police Department on December 26, 1995. After graduating from the police academy, he courageously served the residents of the Northeast, West Valley, and Harbor communities throughout Los Angeles. On July 2, 2000, he was promoted to the rank of P3 and was last assigned to IA, Internal Affairs Group. Chad was always thinking about the best of others and working hard to make sure that we had a better place, a safer place, and the officers were safe. His 22 years of service and dedication to the community is seen throughout all of his actions, where he served ethically, honestly, and morally. Police Officer 3 Chad Frederick Hall passed away on July 7, sadly, due to an illness, and he is survived by his son Austin, his daughters Brianna and Caitlin, his father John, mother Lucy, and his sister Michelle. He'll be greatly missed by all of us in the department, his family, his city family, certainly the community who loved him. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Are there any additional adjourning motions to my left? Again, let me check to my right. I don't see any. This meeting is adjourned.